Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the May 6th work session. And we will begin with the, sorry, Pledge of Allegiance. So for our meeting, we will start with the audience of citizens. And I, I'll read the disclaimer. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels and streamed live. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board state their name and municipality. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. As a reminder, the audience of citizens portion of the meeting is designed for residents and taxpayers of the district to provide comment and feedback on matters which may or may come before the board. It is not designed for debate or discussion with the board. When appropriate, individual school directors may choose to respond to public comments that have been made once the audience of citizens period has concluded, or request that a member of the administration follow up with the speakers after the meeting. This is in reference to Board Policy 903. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is William Patchell. I'll tell you again, maybe some of you have forgotten it already, but I will reinforce who I am. And I have lived in Montgomery Township for a very long time, probably longer than most of the other people have lived where they live. So, number one, we're going to go back to the medical thing. Oh, all the pills coming in from India and foreign manufacturers? Oh, yeah. Probably about 100% tariff on this. And until you stop it, I'll make it 200%. I'm going to make you people wake up. And that's what's going to happen. And you can't do anything about it. And that text comes right out of your pocket. The people sending it here, I hope you don't need a queasen hard thing in the kitchen because you won't find one, man. It's going to be really tough. It's stuck on a container ship somewhere in San Diego somewhere. But anyway, that is a real issue. And there's number, $500 for a visit. Has anybody ever paid $500 for a visit? Who? Show me the bill. Show me the bill, what they give. The people that don't have any coverage. Suppose somebody was a teacher. I don't want the coverage. No, I got my own. That's might happen. Okay, now we'll get on the subject of insurance. Oh, I was talking to a couple elderly people down in Florida. They have a lot to talk about. Insurance, price of butter at $6 a pound, milk at $5. I said, you people are really struggling up here. How do you stand it? We're getting out of this stupid place because we're just like raw meat for some monster preying on us. So, here's what you get with your house. Ah, a guy from Nationwide riding around with a drone. Hey, this is one of our policyholders. Nah, his roof is very bad shape. Cancel his policy. Oh, if you do that, I won't be building it up. What am I going to do with my car now? Well, you'll have to pay more money. What do you expect? You think I want to repair your roof for what a new one is? I'm going to give you a check for 7% of that roof because you don't have anything here. So this is going to be a lot. Don't tell me 94,000 people in North Penn School District, oh, we all have 30-year GFA roofs and it where everybody is going, going perfect. No, they are not. Car insurance, 25. Lucky you don't drive a Tesla, man. If you even have a little bit of damage, I'm sure we had to write your car off. Why? Because nobody's even going to touch that thing. And you got to drag it up to Dublin and convince them like, well, I can't get around. What am I going to do? So, the public is under a lot of pressure. And I'm going to finish out with 11, nine, eight, and it sounds like a SpaceX launch. Stop spending money, okay? Very simple, very good.
Thank you.
And I hope you get it.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jason Lanier, Lansdale. I was, I'm going to pick up where I left off last time I was at one of these meetings, not just now, but before, talking about how many unanimous votes you have. When you include last work session, you're up to 2,135 unanimous votes, or votes, of which only four were not unanimous. So that's a 98.81% unanimous vote rate. And it doesn't even, it doesn't, you're going to never get to 100, but you'll get there pretty close, right? You vote unanimously. Why is this? Do you have differences of opinion? Do you think all the same? Is it a fealty to a political ideology? Why do you vote the same? Because you don't seem to say, you know what? Maybe we hold the brakes on spending this much money. Maybe we don't adopt this policy. Maybe this policy isn't such a good idea. What has, what have these policies cost us, some of these? You know, we can go with, you've made a policy about anti-racism. Do you know what happened with the godfather of anti-racism, Abraham Mahsken, and his $500 million endowment from Boston University? They said, ah, sorry, we're not actually interested. He didn't produce anything in three years. And they didn't sue him, but they basically, they vacated his entire endowment. And you're telling me this is something that we need to do here? He was, he was paid 500, $50 million to figure out how to cure anti-racism. He couldn't do it. But we're going to do it here in this school. And how much money are we going to spend to do that? How much money are we going to do on this equity policy, which doesn't seem to be beneficial to the students? Because if it were, you'd be able to tell me what it was. I've asked Dr. Hart about, can you point to one school in the entire United States which has enacted these equity policies and it's turned out positive? One school in the United States? And you know, nothing back. It's going on three and a half years now. No, nothing back. So why are we doing this? It's costing us money. It's cost us bad policy, which is resorted to hiring people that shouldn't be hired by the school district. Now, we're told that everybody's great, but you know what? I don't think so. We've had some pretty bad instances of people who were hired that shouldn't have been hired. And it's cost us money. We're doing things that aren't beneficial for education. We're doing things because of political ideation. That's what you're doing. You're not doing things because it's beneficial to kids. This is a fealty. This is unanimous. You are unanimous nearly every time you vote. Because you don't have a difference of opinion, you don't think differently from one another, you're all upon agreed. Or you're all talking about it ahead of time. It's one of the two.
Thank you.
So you got to move on.
Okay. Next up on our agenda will be the Solicitor's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. My report tonight is just to announce that the Board did meet in an executive session earlier this evening for the purpose of discussing a matter of school safety and security and to receive guidance from the Solicitor regarding legal developments involving recent executive orders. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. So, under New Business, I'd like to just say thank you to several groups that were recognized this week nationally. They include our teachers, our lunch heroes, and our school nurses. So, all of them are really important to our district. There are several educators sitting at this table as well. So, thank you to all of them from the School Board. Next, Dr. Bauer.
Yes. And before I begin the Superintendent's Report, there's only one item on the consent agenda, so it might as well be a non-consent item. But with that, I would also like to wish Mrs. Ramich and Mr. Fusco a happy birthday. Yesterday was Mrs. Ramich's birthday, and today is Mr. Fusco's birthday. So, happy birthday to both of you. Last month, we had Dr. Waters spend her birthday with us, and now we have you spending your birthday with us. So this is, yeah, this is just great. Okay, so, yeah, right? Let's hope we don't have a meeting on November 2nd. All right. November 2nd, yeah. And Mr. Patchell, he's my birthday buddy. All right. So, next, I recommend approval of the contracts for the district as listed and on file in the business office.
May I please have a motion?
Check, move.
Second. Mr. Resch and, I didn't hear the second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Mr. Fusco, any comments or questions? Mrs. Stoll?
No, I was just checking. November 2nd, it's a Sunday.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I recommend approval of the personnel items as per the attached.
May I have a motion, please?
Still move.
Second.
Mr. Fusco and Mrs. Ramich, all, any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Next, I recommend approval of Madison E.G. and Norman G. III for the position of Extended School Care Program Assistant in the District Summer Camp Program at an hourly rate of $16.51 for Step 1, Grade 5, effective June 23, 2025, to June 30, 2025. And then, with the new calendar year for the school district, $17.21 for July 1, 2025, through August 8, 2025. Just a note for the Board here, we do have a Board policy that says if a relative of, such as Dr. Waters, or myself, or any Board member, is recommended to you, that that is a standalone agenda item. So, Madison and Norman G., two North Penn alums coming home from college this summer, are going to work in our summer camps and Extended School Care Program, so.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, so Mrs. Stoll, Mr. Fusco, may I have, any comments or questions?
So, they're not the only two people working in this program. This program was opened up to everybody, and anybody could have applied to these jobs. And they actually have experience in these jobs.
Yes. So the, I believe both of them were on the agenda last summer as well, as was, I think, Dr. Waters. And if anyone is interested in working in our summer programs, please reach out to the school district. So, yes, there are a number of people who work in our summer camps, our Extended School Care Program, E.S.Y. You'll see a lot of the summer hires, summer help. We have extra custodians come in to help with summer cleaning. So, we need help in the summers. Very grateful for Madison and Norm and all the other people who are listed here.
Any other comments or questions?
Just that I will be abstaining from the vote, as Madison and Norman are my son and daughter. And they're excited to come back and get to work with the little ones from North Penn and get to mentor them. So, they're excited to be back home.
Okay, thank you, Dr. G. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
We have one. Motion passes. Thank you.
So, the next two items will feel like deja vu, because we just elected a Board Secretary and a Board Treasurer through June 30. So this is for next year, beginning right after that, July 1. So, I recommend the election of Ms. Joanna Chavez as Secretary to the Board of School Directors for a four-year term, beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2029, bonded as per the school code with a stipend of $1,200 per year.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Still move.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Fusco and Mrs. Ramich, any comments or questions? Congratulations to Ms. Chavez.
Well, we didn't vote yet. We've got to vote.
Oh, shoot. That's my comments or questions? Oh, sorry. Oh, I did, I shouldn't have said what I said.
Yeah.
One of these, okay, never mind. All right. I look, all right, then my comment is, I look forward to congratulating you.
Well done, right?
It's a recovery. What can I say? All righty. Any other more intelligent comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Congratulations. It's all fun.
Yeah. Next, I recommend the election of Tara B.G. Hauser as a Non-Member Treasurer of the Board of School Directors for a one-year term, beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026, bonded as per the school code and with a stipend of $1,200 per year.
May I have a motion, please?
Still move.
Mr. Fusco, second.
Second.
Dr. G., any comments or questions?
Just a quick question. We don't need her to be elected, or we don't need her to be starting prior to July 1, since she will actually be here at the June meeting?
That's correct. She's actually currently the Treasurer, which we did at the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Because it was Ron Linky and Steve for these positions, and they, neither of them were still here. So technically, you could still have someone who is not employed or working here signing the checks for the school district as the Board-appointed or elected Treasurer. So, Tara is currently the Treasurer, and she will be, she's joining us next week, actually.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Great question.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I recommend to advertise Bid Package 2 for the North Penn High School construction project. This work scope will include renovations and additions in pods A, B, C, D, and E.
May I have a motion? Do we all want to do it at the same time?
Tina got claim to it, so.
I'll second.
Okay. Mrs. Stoll and Mr. Fusco, any comments or questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Because it says this work scope's going to include work in pods A, B, C, D, and E. I thought we were splitting that contract work up. So like, we're going to work on A pod and get contracts for that, and then B pod.
So, that whole bid package for those pods will be all at once. But there are two phases to that, separate out the transportation, and then there is a Phase 3 as well.
Phase 4.
Yeah. So, and actually, the next agenda item is kind of the update on all of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
You are welcome. So certainly, we will update the community and the Board regarding that process and hopeful that we are as successful as we were with Bid Package 1. So with that, it gives me great pleasure to introduce, it says here, Mr. Lynch and Mr. Case. I don't see Mr. Case. So, Mr. Lynch from C.H.A. Solutions, formerly Dewey Engineering, of course, and Mr. David Schrader of Schrader Group Architects, they'll provide an update on our high school project. So, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Schrader, welcome.
That'll allow me to advance. Good evening, everyone. Members of the Board, Administration, North Penn School District community, it's our pleasure to be with you tonight. Mr. Schrader and I are going to tag-team it a little bit this evening, and hopefully that will answer a couple of the questions that were already raised this evening on how the North Penn High School renovation project has been organized. Just to give you a little bit of introduction, we now have four phases of the work for the high school renovation project. And tonight, I'll run through kind of the logistics of the phases, the budget for each phase, a little bit of reasoning on why we've selected the work in each phase. And Mr. Schrader, don't let all of the wonderful images fool you. He and his team, which includes the civil engineer, the M.E.P. engineers, all of the wonderful folks who are working on the project, have labored long and hard in order to put these packages together. So, you're going to see a lot of the fruits of his labors this evening, but we'll go kind of back and forth. And then, I think, if it pleases the Board, at the end of each phase, maybe we take questions on that phase and move forward, so that you can remember your questions by the end of 40-some slides that we have this evening. So, with that, we're going to get probably a little more challenging as we go, but Phase 1 is one that the Board and the community should already be familiar with. Bids were received in February of this year, and Notice of Proceed was provided also in February. And contracts are underway. Shop drawings and procurement are underway for the first phase of work, which really includes the nadatorium and K-pod renovations. It also includes work on site to relocate the propane fueling station, also fuel tank removals, strategic site work, most notably water lines on the site, and the construction of temporary classrooms in the existing high school to prepare for our work in Phases 1, 2, and 3. We need extra classrooms wherever we can get them. And so we've worked with the entire Administration to figure out every nook and cranny where we can fit an additional classroom in the building. The completion dates are identified there. The nadatorium for dates associated with the upcoming swim season. And then K-pod, we're working from the third floor down to the first floor with renovations. And the dates for completion of those phases, you see there. The budget for the project is attached here in your presentation. This is the numbers that are, that represent all of the work post-bid. As you may recall, the bidding process was very successful, some $2 million under budget here. And if it pleases the Board again, this is how I'll always be reporting to on the budget for each phase of the project. And the way that I like to do this is really to go down to the second to the last line and look at, well, actually, third to the last line, and look at construction contingency. And I'll keep track of where our expenditures are during the project, and it'll be reflected in whatever the balance is for contingency. So one way to understand the financial health of the project is to take a look at where the contingency stands as compared to today, that $800,000 number. So we'll start to track costs against each of these line items and report on them on a very regular basis as we get through construction. Both hard costs, which are the contractor's costs, and soft costs, which are all of the things that the district purchases directly, that goes into the project. With that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Schrader, who's got some imagery on Phase 1.
Well, good evening. Nice to see everybody again. All of this is the outcome of weekly meetings, meetings here, one week between your team, our team, construction management, all the engineers, and so on. And then the opposite week is in our offices, doing real detailed and finesse work on this. And then you find folks two to three times a week, meeting with individual groups about specific topics, door hardware, building systems, room fit-out, and so on. So it's been quite a process. The imagery that we're going to share, I think a number of you have seen the Phase 1 imagery already. We'll hit a couple of new spots. We are not showing the nadatorium, because that essentially is going to be replaced in kind, all of the finishes, the systems. We are working on the steps and bleachers. We're putting in new railings there, as well as the filming platform and so on. But you will see lighting, HVAC, paint finishes, tile, and so on. K-pod as a whole, as you know, is receiving window replacements and roof, so that will also look like it does just new systems. And obviously, as buildings age, you need to replace all of those. So we'll hit a couple of the newer spots here. In each of these images, there is a key diagram on the left-hand side, and the little bouncing blue dot will show you where the space is that we're talking about here. And we try our best to pick up an image of what the space looks like currently, and then what it might look like as it's renovated. Every space will receive new finishes. Where the HVAC is being replaced, the same. And also, lighting and all power throughout all of these spaces. So you're seeing a new entry, main office reception area in K-pod here. Branding will be consistent throughout the building. Finishes will be consistent throughout the building. And all of the eras of the facility will begin to look like one. It'll look like it was done today, and it'll feel that way until somebody decides to renovate it in the future. So, new spaces throughout. The corridors, I think we talked about this at another point in time. The corridors themselves, many of the lockers will be eliminated. As you know, and as you walk through many facilities and toured facilities, the lockers are less used, and so we're finding other opportunities for those. So in the hallways, along with the refinishing of all the finishes and all the replacement of the systems, you get student touchdown spots. And so the students will have places, as they circulate throughout the facility, to do whatever and meet with whomever in the spaces. And so you see the lockers in the lower left, the removal and replacement in the upper right. And there are a whole series of benches and work tables and so on that are built in as you go down those hallways. K-pod also has a couple of computer rooms across the hallway from where the main office is today. We get to take advantage of these very accessible spaces for the PAYS Lab. PAYS Lab, obviously, is a great space for transitional learning for students on the job-type learning. So this is fitted out with point-of-service stations. It has a laundry space. It has a small shop space. And then it also has an instructional space, along with all of the finishes throughout. This just turns and looks kind of out the windows, the new replaced windows. But you can see there's a small kitchen area to it. And again, that point-of-service in the left-hand side to kind of teach how to check out and things like that. Along with that is the Post-12 Lab. And you folks know what your Post-12 program is. So this is also transitional learning. It's a full apartment setup. So they have a living area, a Murphy bed in the background there, a kitchen, also laundry facilities as well. And as you turn around, there's an instructional space. So the space really serves as two purposes for those students. So great location, great renovations, and a nice opportunity for the students in that area of the building. One of the things that we're doing, and I think we talked about this before, but just to keep this consistent, the science labs are mostly going to be located here in K-pod and also over in C-pod. And so, the idea will be to make sure that those labs look the same, no matter which of the pods that they're in. And so you're seeing replacement of all the cabinetry, the finishes, the HVAC again, and all of the teaching and instructional space. This will be complemented later on by some additional renovations that you'll see over in C-pod. So, nice renovations for your labs. Try for Phase 2, or do we want to stop and answer some questions about that?
I got a couple. Okay. When you mentioned about trying to find classroom space to relocate students, does that mean we are trying to go with no modulators, or just limit the number of modulators? What is the thinking with?
That's a construction. Okay, that's great. There are no modulators associated with the project.
Excellent. That's good. Okay, that's a good answer to that one.
You're correct.
Uh-huh. So, I got a couple. I'm going to stick with one other question. And actually, it might be, I'm not sure who it's for. It's a soft-cost question perhaps, but on that second slide or third slide, you have a budget item that says $131,000 for classroom STEM technology equipment. I'm curious, that's a pretty specific number, so what are we talking about in terms of that equipment?
Basically, that's educational technology. And we keep it rather nebulous at the beginning of a project, because we always know that technology changes. And so, right now, in many of those rooms, there are projectors and whiteboards, and the school will be refitting out those educational technology components as a part of the project. And I believe we're still sticking with projectors. No, smart TVs on carts, right?
TVs on carts, not like Viewsonic boards, or? They are Viewsonic boards, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. I'll.
Just a follow-up. I'd be interested in a future ECI meeting and getting more information about exactly what the technology is that's going to be throughout the building, and just how kind of we're determining what. Because obviously, this is a long-term project, so we don't want to start with something that's going to be outdated by the end of the project. So, I'm just curious on what direction we're going to go in.
Well, and also, I think, because I know part of my interest personally, as I'm nearing the end here, is to have actually discussions about some of what teachers and groups that are being put together to look into what this is going to look like are talking about in terms of soft costs, right? Like, most of what you're planning, I don't have a lot of, you know, influence over at this point. But I am really curious to know, like, when we're talking about like those PAYS Labs, and we're talking about the science labs, they look nice, but they also, in these renderings, look empty. So I'm actually really interested. And I think that may be an ECI presentation in terms of, like, who, whatever groups are discussing those, because that was probably most of the rest of my questions there.
Yeah, I can give a quick 30-second update on the technology. Right now, we are planning ViewSonics in every classroom throughout the, all of the teaching spaces. However, we are putting data and electricity in the presentation walls and in the middle of the ceiling, so it could easily, to your point, Dr. G, over the course of five years, there may be technology that has not yet been invented, but the rooms will be ready to receive that technology in 2030 and 2031 and 2032 when it's invented. So right now, we're staying with the ViewSonics. They're modular. They're able to move around, and they fit the needs of the building right now, but we will have the rooms outfitted for quick outfitting of technology as it comes about.
They're also, as I understand, about a fifth of the cost of a SMARTboard.
Correct.
Before you sit down, Mr. -- Dr. Nicholson, I'm sorry, Dr. Nicholson. Teachers are, have been involved in those decisions and?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so groups of teachers are?
Groups of teachers have been in. We've talked about what the classroom look and feel will be, what the furniture will be, what the technology will be. They've been involved in all those discussions.
And they've had a chance to, like, we've gotten a board out to them, they've had a chance to play with it, and?
The high school currently is outfitted with ViewSonics in every classroom, or just about every classroom already. So that is not going to be new technology for anyone.
Okay, thank you.
Is it okay? I was just going to add, Dr. G and Mr. Fusco, that we can plan for that maybe at the August ECI meeting. Okay? Thank you.
I think this is for Mr. Lynch. So on this slide with the cost summary, the $800,000 in construction contingency, let's say it's not all utilized in Phase One, does that roll to Phase Two?
To be clear, that is the district's money. And so whatever is left rolls to whatever phase or purpose you would like to use it for.
Okay, great. And then, this is sort of like a special meeting, and I'll pivot to Dr. Bauer regarding how security will be maintained, because the technology in the auditorium in K-Pod will be updated and will not be what's happening in the other pods, right? Mr. Slaughter's looking at me like I lost my mind again.
I'm trying to understand his question.
So the question is, as we're upgrading technology in, say, the auditorium?
Security specifically.
Yeah, new security systems, new cameras, and they don't necessarily?
How do we maintain security? And maybe this is a Safe Schools agenda item at some point, I don't know, but?
We'll need you at a microphone. Microphone.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, just for television purposes. Thank you. Fix your hair, please, before you go into it. I forgot my comb today. So it's, we're all good. So, yeah, we're going to be running two systems at the same time. So there are systems that we are going to be replacing as part of the construction project. The old systems will be up and running at the same time as we bring the new systems online, so it's going to be a little bit of extra work. But, you know, for everyone involved, so like, Mr. Roan is going to have two separate systems running the building that he's going to have to bounce back and forth to. But as we get further along, more, a higher percentage of the school will be over to the new systems. Eventually, when we get to the end, we'll be 100% on all the new platforms.
And then at some point, you'll shut down as you go, or the plan is to shut down the old system once the full project is completed?
No, as we go.
Okay, thank you.
Guys, one more quick question, specifically on the chemistry lab here. I apologize, because you were making your way back to your seat. There are traditionally, in chemistry and science classrooms, safety areas where the rinsing can take place with the chemicals. I didn't see it here, just want to make sure. That's still in effect?
Yeah, it's on the backside.
Yeah, it's included, and where there are no floor drains in Phase Two, we will be adding floor drains to make sure that's captured.
Jamie, can you jump to Slide 24? Keep going. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Almost there. Keep going. Almost there. There we go. There's a shower on the left there.
I appreciate why you've been?
That was easy, wasn't it, Mr. Lynch?
That was Phase One. It gets harder as we go, as we've learned, as we put the phasing together. So for all of the good questions that you just asked, this is the reason that the project has been broken into phases. Technology is just one response to that. The fact that, what do we do in Phase One versus Phase Two? How do we make those purchases? How do you make those purchases as technology evolves? The first strategic effort is that that technology is not in the contractor's bid. It's in your hands to procure for when the building is ready. So you're doing just-in-time procurement of the latest technology available for the classroom. So all of this has really gone through a very hefty thought process. So Phase Two. After Phase One, auditorium and K-Pod are underway. We're starting on Phase Two, which are the pods that are listed there, A, B, C, D, and E, because they're kind of together. The biggest of them is A-Pod. And A-Pod carries with it the big addition that we need to create swing space for the rest of the renovation. So the way we create the swing space, and hopefully avoid modulators, is to build temporary classrooms within the existing school and build the additional capacity onto the school so that we have these spaces and can continually, through all of the phases, move students out of renovated areas. And so it begins with the construction of foundations and the addition to A-Pod, after which, the rest of A-Pod will be renovated. And then we are back and toggling back and forth between D and E and C Pods, but we're getting that sorted out. And the schedule that we have at this point is listed here. So right now, we're advertising for bids this month. Bids would be due in late July. We would ask the board to act on them in August, and we begin procurement. Phase Two, from a construction standpoint, is really predicated on the receipt of the NPDS permit that's been submitted. We've gotten one comment letter back, and we expect that that permit could go as late as October of this year, before we get it, which would allow us to start site work. And so everything in the phasing schedule for construction that the contractors go by is really predicated on when we get the NPDS permit. And all of these dates here are predicated on when that permit is received. So it's very important, obviously, to pursue, get the permit. If we had any comments back from the Conservation District, which we've gotten, the team has been very quick to respond to them. And just to be clear, here, we are going with D and E renovation first, and then C-Pod closes out Phase Two. Just from a visual standpoint, and I did not bring the pointer up here for some reason.
Oh, does that one not have it?
Does this have it? Oh, you got it. Okay. Just to be clear on where this is, and it's a small pointer, Bid Package Two is the addition of A-Pod, the renovation of A-Pod, the renovation of B-Pod, the renovation of DE-Pod, as we call it, and the renovation of C-Pod. It's everything north, or planned north, of the auditorium and H-Pod. This gives us the ability to really concentrate the renovation and also the abatement on the classroom spaces, the library, the large group, and the cafeteria spaces of the building. We've separated it from Phase Three, which is really the balance of the building, really based on the overall contract value and the desire to have local, qualified contractors be able to participate in the bidding process and not absorb all of their bonding capacity. So we've made what we feel is a project that is right-sized for the largest contractors in the region, who we commonly see on projects of this size and type, to be able to go after this work, as opposed to having contractors for a much larger project come from out of the region in order to work on the building. So there's the separation between the biggest parts of the project, Phase Two and Phase Three. Whoop. Going too fast. The dates for Phase Two are listed here. These are all of the prescribed dates for our advertisement, for the release of documents, our pre-bid conference, and everything leading to award, contract, and ultimately, final completion. This chart will be here also for Phase Three and Phase Four, which are much later in the project timeline. So all of your board meetings, we don't exactly know when those are yet, so all of it, in those two phases, this chart will be a little less filled out. But all of the dates for the bid package that we talked about tonight and are proceeding with are listed here. And then the budget, I apologize for the size of the budget on Phase Two, meaning the size of the budget on the slide, not the amount per se, but it is listed here. Same format of hard costs at the top, and that has additions and renovations, exterior shell upgrades, site improvements, and demolition. Our electrical, mechanical, plumbing contractor, the environmental contract, is in Phase Two for total construction cost just over $100 million, and associated soft costs on the lines below, all very similar to what you saw in Phase One for work associated with Phase Two. A very healthy phasing design and construction contingency of just over, well, just at $11 million for a total estimated project cost just over $125 million for Phase Two. We've done the same thing that I'll show you in a moment for Phase Three, for the rest of the project. Our challenge in Phase Two and Phase Three is construction phasing, very simply. We need to work on second floor and first floor of each pod. We have abatement to perform in each pod, and then we have to go through and systematically renovate each pod and provide all of the finishes that Mr. Schrader's about to show you. The benefit, if there is one, to a renovation of this type and size is that you do have pod structures. And so we're trying to take over as much of the pod as we can at any one time, as opposed to other renovations where the body of the building is really in one whole area. And so we have separate systems, separate power systems that feed each pod, and so that's one way that we can work our way through from a construction standpoint and do each area at a time. With that, I think I'll let Mr. Schrader run through the images.
Probably most interesting for this project for us, for the design team, has been the level of discussion of phasing. And Mr. Lynch has led that, obviously. He's had the resources of Colin Case, who's spent 10 years on job sites trying to phase projects, which is pretty impressive. Mr. Slaughter, who's made a career out of construction. And then they've had Dr. Nicholson in all of those conversations, so we figure out how you're going to move around that building as time goes on. So several folks have seen the image of the new, and you almost don't want to call it rear of the building anymore. This faces the stadium, and it will be a secondary entry to the campus. As you know, we have a secondary circulation route at the backside of the site, so it will probably help to disperse the arrival and departure traffic as administrators think about how they're going to move folks around the site. But it also provides another large entry point to the facility. So the interior of that space is this image, and the front lobby of the facility will have very similar finishes, very, very similar branding. And so as you come in, both the back door and the front door, which will both kind of be front doors to the facility in the future, you'll have a very similar feeling. This side of the building happens to have all of the steam spaces, and so those glass walls that you're seeing on the left-hand side look into the arts areas. There are a couple of tech ed areas directly off of this, just off to the right, and then down to the right-hand side are the balance of the technology education spaces as well. More important to this, though, we have talked about circulation routes through this building from day one. And so what this kind of space does is it allows that separation of first and second floor immediately on entering the building, so that when students do come into this facility, those who have to go to the second floor can go right to the second floor, which is not something people can do today. When we get to the front entry images, which are not in this presentation, you'll see something similar. There's an opportunity for students now to go directly to the second floor from your front lobby, as well as from the back lobby here. And then the last part of this is, for the multiple months a year that we have good weather in the area, that glass wall at the back actually accesses the courtyard area, and you'll have a very nice courtyard area for students to circulate, almost as if it's a college campus on the exterior-interior of the building, if that makes any sense. So that gives you a little bit of sense of that. Important to us through this whole process has been trying to, to some extent, erode all of these tight corners and provide people more opportunity to see as they're going around these corners, and as we take locker banks out, to provide these areas for students to stop. You know, kind of that community college feel, you've got room to sit down, you've got opportunity to do a little bit of work or to just have some time with some students as you, as you work through the process of the day. So these kinds of corners will start to appear in the facility. And as we've talked about, since many of you have toured facilities, furniture makes everything in these new high schools. And so you'll start to see movable furniture and furniture that is very mobile as a whole. The dining area, lower left-hand corner, is the same image as you see in the upper right. And so this just gives you a good sense. One of the biggest things that we're doing here is taking that from four separate areas, plus the senior caf, and trying to open the whole thing up so it's more of a food court area. We're replacing all of the food service equipment. We're providing an entire new food court distribution, so it's as if students were going to a college food court and being able to select the products that they like. And again, you'll start to see the same kinds of graphic images and so on throughout the facility in similar finishes. One of the things that I notice when I look at all of these renderings is that many of them are done without the light fixtures in them, and I think that's testament to the amount of daylighting that will be coming into this facility as we start to open up some of those exterior walls and put more windows in and so on. This is just looking a different direction. This actually looks across to the senior cafeteria at the very center back of that, and that's a very different image than what you see today, as you can tell. We are changing the bathroom configurations in four of the bathroom areas of the facility. And so the goal today, of course, is to try to create universal design in the facility. And so these are some of those individual toilet stalls and hand-washing stations in the building. Again, there are four specific areas, the addition, the dining area, and E-Pod, D and E-Pod. The balance of facilities throughout will be the traditional bathroom setups, but this gives you a sense of what some of these might look like as time goes on. Classrooms as a whole. We did not show some of the classrooms in K-Pod in the initial renovation. There are, I think, two or three, two rooms, if I'm not mistaken. But the balance of classrooms will be very bright, new finishes, and behind you, you're seeing more daylight coming in because we are opening up the exterior walls with larger windows to try to bring more daylighting into the facility as a whole. And this image kind of gives you a sense of that. Dr. Bauer had us go right to this because of the hand wash and eye wash and shower station in the left-hand corner. But what this also displays is the similarity to what K-Pod will look like, so you know that the two science areas look the same, and also the greater window area on the exterior wall, so there's more daylighting coming into all of these classrooms. The library or media center is a big renovation in this facility. The idea here, again, we talked about eroding corners that you may walk around. This tries to open up the library area to the two corners, the two diagonal corners of the D and E pod area, and it provides similar finishes to the new back addition lobby, as well as to the existing K-Pod entry lobby and all of the entry lobby sequence that you'll go through. Obviously, you're seeing it devoid of any technology or books or people, but this will be a very functional and lively space. There'll be two nicely contained classrooms directly off of this that can be used directly by this space as well. And the finishes go out to the two corners so that it connects this space much more to the academic areas of the building. You are seeing the drop in floor here, so that drop in floor, we actually utilize, the same one that you currently have, but it opens itself up to a very nice seating area, not just a stacks area. And we've talked about A-33 and C-39 since the beginning. And you'll remember at one point in time, these did have popped-up roofs trying to bring daylighting into the center, but at this point in time, they don't have that, but they have all of the same components that we looked at from the beginning. Nice finishes. You can see at the lower left-hand corner, it's the curved seating areas in A-33. Those are removed, and we put in the straight across seating area. There's an accessible location in that upper right-hand corner. There are accessible indents in the lower corners, and the space provides a great technology area as well for students, and it connects those two floors of both A and C Pods very nicely. I think the big one here in these is, there's the corner of the second floor in A-Pod, and when we take those walls out and take some of the mechanical spaces out, this is the kind of open area that you'll see and that connectivity that we talked about from the very beginning of the project in both A and C Pods. Probably the other thing that we've talked about since the very beginning of this project besides traffic throughout the space is wayfinding. And so in strategic corners of the facility, you'll start to see this kind of wayfinding. This happens to be the A-Pod entry, and we're not labeling which rooms are where. Instead, we're talking about primary components of the building that might be located to the right or to the left, and whether you're on floor number one or floor number two, and what those space types are. So this will be And so, in strategic corners of the facility, you'll start to see this kind of wayfinding. This happens to be the A-pod entry. And we're not labeling which rooms are where. Instead, we're talking about primary components of the building that might be located to the right or to the left, and whether you're on floor number one or floor number two, and what those space types are. So, this will be a consistent graphic that is in strategic traffic areas of the building to try to help people locate where they are in the structure. Should I jump right into?
I have questions.
Okay.
I have multiple questions. So, I'm just trying to... First, I'll just say compliment you on, I love the wayfinding, especially for the ninth grade parents on the back-to-school night, who are like, "What?" Just the natural light. And I just think it's just going to be such an inspirational space for the students to work in, especially all of the open areas so that it can look more, feel more like, like you said, that community college feel. Because that's really what we're training our kids to be able to do, right? To be able to have. We still have night zone and place, correct? So, the idea is that we are moving towards that. I was wondering, I liked the courtyard, or the, like, the court, food court. Yes, the courtyard and the food court. What is the plan as it relates to renovating the cafeteria space and still being able to feed the children?
Ah, the tricky one.
So, it's a very good question. And the challenge, I see Mr. Slaughter coming up to help me out as well, is that I can't renovate the kitchen cafeteria in eight weeks over the summer, I'm sorry to say. We have new utilities that need to go under the slab. We have, obviously, a kitchen to install and all of the related utilities and appurtenances. And so, we've arrived at an arrangement in part of the senior caf. There's temporary classrooms. We have to take the cafeteria offline, but still provide food service for kids in the building. They won't eat necessarily in the cafeteria, but instead, over in the auxiliary gym during that timeline. And we have temporary provisions that will be set up for the time that we don't have a cooking kitchen in operation. We're doing our best to do everything we can in order to do most of the work over the summer. But unfortunately, that work really is relegated to the demolition of the existing kitchen and the construction of the new has to follow it during the school year. So, that's a quick sum up.
What's the period of time that we're talking about? In terms of the time during the school year that we wouldn't be able to specifically serve warm meals to students?
Very, very good question. We have to get through A-pod, the new construction, the renovation, the second floor of B. Then the cafeteria's on the first floor. And then, we get to that. So, we need all of these things to line up, including that NPDS permit that I identified, which allows us to start in order to hit our target of doing demolition of the cafeteria during the summer of '27. Okay? So, all of those things have to fall in line in order to hit demo. And then, we go from there. Full stage from demo to completion is probably a June to December timeline for a new kitchen. And Mr. Slaughter, you stepped up. I didn't know if you wanted to add.
Sure. So, we've already coordinated with School Nutrition Services on this. We're going to take the concession area that's over by the gyms and create a serving area out of there with warmers. That's to serve the auxiliary gym. We do anticipate we'll be bringing in some box lunches. But School Nutrition Services is developing a plan to prep off-site, bring food to the building, warm it up, and serve that way. So, we're not going to be entirely serving box lunches or bag lunches during that time. Our goal is to serve warm food as well.
Thank you. I know it's tricky and there isn't a clean answer to it, but...
Yes, it was a lot of, it was a lot of work to get done over the summer. So, we had already started from the get-go, planning on how do we temporarily serve food and what's our process going to be to prep food off-site and get it to the site as well.
Thank you.
I guess this is for Mr. Lynch, but I'm not sure. In Phase Two, there are two contingency costs, one for design and one for phasing that totals 7.4 million. Can you give more detail regarding those costs and what exactly you anticipate? Because honestly, I think they are really high.
Thank you for the question, and it's a very good question. We did the same thing as we approached the bid phase of Phase One.
But in Phase One, we didn't have phasing. We just had design. Did, I don't recall seeing design contingency for Phase One. That's my confusion.
So, we did carry a contingency for the design. And so, the design contingency is designed for anything that doesn't appear on the drawings, even at the 90% phase of the work. And so, it's a contingency for what gets into the project during addendums, during any types of changes, et cetera. It's a contingency for bid day. Phasing contingency, I'm sure you understand. We have temporary walls and all types of temporary measures that we have to implement during the project. And then, we carry a contingency for U as we go into construction. That's the third level.
Okay, so, phasing contingency actually has something attached to it, like you're saying, a temporary wall or something like that?
It does.
Where the design would be, if there, again, just to repeat so I'm clear, the design contingency would be regarding a change, even at the 90% drawings. And then, you've got to go back and start, not start over hopefully, but all right.
Correct. And so, if I can do it as a math equation, you know, we're identifying $100 million in total construction costs and the hard costs. And that could be as high as $107,000 and $400,000 on bid day, if all of those contingencies are absorbed in the construction price. We would love to be, in our estimate, the second lowest bidder for you.
Absolutely. I'm with you.
I hope that makes sense.
Okay, thanks for that. Couple other questions. Why are there two different bid dates? There's, I believe, a July 17th and then, an alternate July 22nd bid date for Phase Two.
Terrific. So, we never know exactly what's going to come up during the bid phase of a project. We could find that there are questions that need to be answered or something that we discover as a project team that requires an extension of the bid due date. And so, for a project of this magnitude, we would always identify a planned date for receipt and a backup plan. Fortunately, that's a July thing, especially when we do this in the wintertime. You can imagine we have an alternate date because sometimes weather plays a role. But I would expect July would not present us with that challenge.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And then, this is probably way down in the weeds, but charges. So, when I see all those open spaces, Mr. Schrader, those areas, do they have many, many charging stations or outlets for students and their technology, electronics, and, you know?
Obviously, lessons learned from past projects that we have to provide as many of those as possible. Mostly, there'll be electrical outlets because our technology changes day to day, unfortunately. So, you'll see a lot more power outlets for folks to charge things than you will USB or USB-C or anything like that.
All right. And one last thing. And I, this is an awesome presentation. Thank you. ADA compliance or highlighting some of the previous comments when we heard about that large area, A-33, and the ability for wheelchairs to access it, not just at the bottom, but to be able to access it at different levels, also in the dining area. If you could let us know that, what that looks like and highlight them, just as you did the wash station in the lab.
Sure. So, probably not showing up well here, but if you went to the left or right in the, I'll start with the media center, because that, as you know today, has the drop already. This has ramps on either side, and they become part of the cabinetry, part of the bookshelf system. And so, it doesn't appear as if it's something that's specifically made for somebody with a disability. Instead, it's just natural accessibility. And so, that's part of that universal design concept. As you move through these kinds of images, we will never get away from the stair system solution. And so, we're still stuck with the providing access at the bottom and providing access at the top. The middle would require some kind of lift system, or it would require a ramp system that obviously is not accessible and not usable in a space like this. So, it's the same as an auditorium where you provide at the top, middle, bottom, and you are ramped from the top and bottom. So, that's how we have to deal with these kinds of spaces.
Can I ask you a question?
Could I interrupt you just for a second? Draw your attention, and this is kudos to David's team. When we were looking at this, we said, is there any, so if you look at the image in the lower left-hand corner, that's the current image of A-33. A student in a wheelchair is not getting to any level. They are sitting separate from their colleagues or their peers, right? So, in conversations with Eric and David and Devin, you'll notice these cutouts there in the first row, so the students actually can sit among their peers. And if you were to swing the camera in that lower left-hand image and look at the front of that room, there's a stage. The student wouldn't be able to get up on the stage because that was not ADA accessible. There's no stage in this imagery. So, it is flat. It's an even playing field. So, it's not perfect, but it is far more accessible. And up in the top right corner, David, do you have a pointer? I don't know if you do or not.
I have one.
There you go.
There we go. In the top right corner, you'd have to look behind you.
Look there.
Yeah, a wheelchair could actually come out onto there as well to be a part of the class at the higher level, too. So, not just sitting in the back. So, trying to find ways to be more accessible, not perfect, but definitely an improved situation.
I appreciate that. And because you have been so thoughtful and have provided this universal design, I think it's important that we hear about it, but also the community hear about it as you continue on. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have one question. When we toured the Upper Marion Building, which, by the way, I was in last week. It was interesting to see kids in it and see it actually in use. There was discussion about the classroom spaces functioning more like on a college campus where they were more shared than dedicated to one particular person. When I look at the classrooms, I haven't seen like an image of like a collaboration room. Are we, because of the failure of the referendum, getting away from that concept? Or are we still staying with something that's in that same line?
We have teacher.
No, we actually, I'm sorry. We probably didn't highlight that. In a number of the clusters, we do also have teacher work areas.
Great, okay, cool.
So, they're a little bit less than what you saw at Upper Marion, but they have similar components to them as well.
Fabulous, thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Nicholson, can you speak to the second part of Mr. Fusco's question about kind of the shared versus dedicated workspace and the opportunities to have a biology class in here one period, a chemistry class in this space the next period, and kind of utilize spaces for different purposes, yes?
Sure. And I think what we're going to find is it's going to be a mix after the renovation is complete. There will certainly be some shared spaces. We share spaces now. We may have a math class in a room. Periods one, two, three, and fourth period, we may have some other sort of use in that classroom. We'll still have some of that. Excuse me. Our lab space will be pretty much dedicated to chemistry for chemistry, biology for biology. Sure, we could use that for something else, but we're putting a lot of resources into those labs and the other specialty spaces to make sure that they're utilized as such. But a lot of the other classrooms, we do have a little bit more mixture of our departments amongst each other, but still together. So, we do have the IPC space, instructional planning centers, where that will be a mix of workstations for teachers and gathering space where they can sit, they can eat lunch, they can collaborate together as well.
Can you talk a little bit about, right now, we have, for those of you who don't have a high school or yet, we have home offices because we have a large high school. So, how are you planning to, is it still going to be organized the same? Because right now, there's the home office and kind of everyone is located there. Is that going to be similar? Are you looking at a different dynamic now that you have the ability to make some changes to that?
Great question. We are going to stick with the same basic structure. Where the home offices are, where the offices are, we'll be moving quite a bit. So, the main office, which is currently in the center of the building, will be moving up to the front of the building. Some of the home offices will be not in the locations we know them today, but we do, and we do anticipate having the same structure where a couple of assistant principals, some counselors, some support staff would all be in that office and serve the same grade level and loop with that grade level. So, we went to that, we transitioned to that probably about six years ago, seven years ago, maybe even more now. And it has been a model that's worked well, trying to make the larger school into something a little bit smaller and really specializing in grade levels rather than across all three. I worked in both as an assistant principal. I can say I love our current model much more than I did having 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. So, we are anticipating that. But all those office spaces will be new, re-envisioned, and have, in many ways, some more conference space and work areas for collaboration.
One last question. You mentioned in the design, the rear of the building also being a place of entry. Right now, everyone comes in through the front of the building. What will that mean for, so the home office would still be in the front of the building, or the main office would be in the front of the building. What will be at the back of the building? Is from a, are we going to have now like two check-in points? There'll be two security spaces? What would that look like?
So, we are outfitting both the front main entry and that new entry in the rear in the A-pod addition the exact same way. So, we would be able to do two separate check-in points, whether we maintain that all day long or we, let's say, shut down the back of the building after arrival and use it for some night events. That'll be something that we work out as we get closer and we open that and we see kind of how it works. There is additional parking out back of the building. So, we're anticipating either moving a large number of staff parking spots to the back of the building or alternatively, moving some of the student parking to the back. So, certainly in the morning, there will be some bus drop-off there. There'll also be some arrival that happens. So, we'll have security posted at that desk, similar to how we would in the front of the building, checking students in, scanning their IDs at that back entrance. After, let's say, maybe second period, when most of our students are in the building, we may shut that down for an entry point, maybe exit only, but we would still have security in that area.
Sure.
Hold on tight. Here comes the other educator with his questions. This looks like a building I would love to teach in. So, kudos to you guys for making this quite an educational center to be proud of. I love that the open spaces allow for more traffic for folks at home. Don't forget, the high school schedule has eight different periods. So, not only are students traveling through a large building, they're also doing it many times a day. So, we want to make sure that they're there when they're supposed to be there in four minutes. From the current design to the new design, it seems like we have maybe a net gain of two or three classrooms? Or are we net gaining sort of more educational spaces, like the new A-33, I'll call it, or those, you know, kind of transition zones? So, how many actual new specific classrooms versus just these spaces that we can bring our kids out into during a class?
Sure. And I'm going off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's very specific.
I believe the A-pod edition is adding 16 classrooms. But throughout the renovation, there's some net loss. For instance, punching holes through A-pod to add to the A-pod edition. We lose a couple of classrooms there. With the change in J-pod, which I'm sure we'll talk about shortly, there's some classroom space there that will be lost because the current fitness center cannot be programmed as a space because it is completely inaccessible for ADA purposes. So, that will be moving down into the J-pod area. So, there is a net gain. I believe it will be around eight to 10 when it's all said and done. But again, that's off of memory from the top of my head.
No, that's great. That sounds excellent and is a better number than I had anticipated. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, one more. And then, I'm going to zip it. I'm back to, it's your birthday. Are you leaving?
Yes.
You, you wanted this, though.
He didn't want all of our questions.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I need to ask one more. Happy birthday, Christian. I hope you enjoy your cake.
I do, thank you.
You're welcome. So, I'm back on that design contingency and phasing contingency. Would they come through as change orders or, and where my head's going, particularly around design contingency? So, if it is really at 90% drawings and we hear, you know, there is a change, I just would want to know if it's something that's repeated or different or, I don't know. That one bugs me a little.
But I think it's a marvelous question. And here's the reason why. First is those contingencies that we just mentioned, design and phasing contingency. Anything that is unused or unconsumed, if you will, by the bid rolls into the project contingency for you. It just moves into that, and you can push it to another phase if you need to. Again, it's the school district's dollars. Now, when we talk about change orders, you mentioned the magic word. A change order that's issued does come out of the project contingency. That is the reason that the contingency exists. So, as we go from phase to phase, as we finish Phase One... So as we go from phase to phase, as we finish phase one, we'll be showing you where we stand with contingency. And as soon as that phase is complete, that contingency moves to the balance of the project. It can be placed wherever the board so chooses. You know, again, always, the contingency is always your, your dollars. And so of course, that's what you'll, you know, use to judge the project as we go through each phase.
Could I ask one question?
Yes.
Do we go and present this to the public at any point in time? Besides in, in, in our meeting?
This is the public.
Yeah, I mean, this is really our platform. Pete has gone to present to students at times. He has gone to present to the staff, but this is the community. We've got one community member here who's a student reporter, so thank you for being here. But no, it would just be.
Your story means the world to us. Thank you.
So we do have, we do have a mechanism for, we have a website reserved for renovations. Bob's going to do some regular updates, like live streams, walking through the renovation and videos, those types of things. But this, there's going to be multi modalities, if you will. It's going to be board meetings, Facebook Live events, YouTube channel, newsletters, website. We're going to try to triangulate all of that.
And we could tell, we could possibly tell them to look at the meeting if they wanted to follow through with that. Thank you.
And the approval process goes through the township land development process, which is also at public meetings. Okay. I mentioned that we had four phases and I'm sneaking in a Phase 2A on you this evening. Phase 2A is the replacement of the existing transportation building. And this component of the project is very similar nature in some ways, from a phasing standpoint anyway, to the cafeteria question that you asked about. Because we need to build the transportation building, get it operational, and then take the old transportation building down while doing what? Maintaining the transportation building and all of the services that transportation provides and all of the busing for the project. Bless you. And so in order to deliver the transportation building, we've taken a slightly different route and we're working through a cooperative purchasing contract through Gordian, the same company that delivered the health services building to the district, so that we can get a direct quote from Gordian and their contractor, who was publicly and competitively bid from year to year in order to provide construction services. And so we're in the throes of doing that now. Mr. Schrader's team has put together the design for the building. It's been relayed to Gordian's contractor, who's S.J. Thomas, who will provide a quote at the same time as Phase 2A bids for the construction of the transportation building. And the start of the building is also predicated by that wonderful NPDS permit. And the site of the construction building is just plan north of the existing building, which is shown on the plan. And you can see through the transparency of the new building that there are trees currently in that location. Well, we need the NPDS permit to clear the trees and prepare the ground for the new building. And so by using the Gordian contract, it introduces a degree of flexibility to the construction of the building and the ability to negotiate with the cooperative purchasing contractor on the precise start of the work while maintaining an adequate procurement phase so they're ready to go. That's as succinct as I can put how we plan to go about the transportation building, and you know some of the history. Here is a plan of the transportation building that we've worked out with the entire facilities and transportation team. It includes bay design, a wash bay, appropriate storage areas, meeting areas, bathroom areas, and also a mezzanine. It's meant to be a building that's a pre-engineered metal building type with a metal roof and accommodates all of the needs of transportation and maintenance out on the site. We've spent considerable time trying to locate this building on the site, decide which way bay doors face on the site, identifying how the fueling station that will serve, the buses will work, the generator for this building and all services. And so the Gordian contractor will build just the building and the Phase 2 contractor will prepare the site and do all of the finished site work for the building. So that's how we've separated the division of scope for the transportation building. And so as I mentioned, the design is nearing completion. We're using cooperative purchasing. The start date will be dictated by the NPDS receipt and the Phase 2 contractor's clearing and construction of a stone building pad. The pricing, as I mentioned, will be received on the same timeline as Phase 2 and awarded at approximately the same time. And completion will be coordinated to allow the district to move into the new building and for the existing transportation building to be abated and demolished presumably during the summer of 2027 and after the APod addition is complete. That's a mouthful, and so is the site arrangement associated with all of the work on APod, the transportation building, moving people into the new transportation building, maintaining parking and utility work on the back of the site. And that is the phasing challenge that we have and that we've been working out. Some of those things have been done very proactively. As an example, the water lines in the back of the existing high school and the conveyance of those water lines to North Penn School District from North Penn Water Authority was a great way for us to get in this summer and install those water lines that serve not only the building, but ultimately the transportation building. So it's a very complex web. And the costs, again, for Phase 2A, which is the transportation building, are listed here. Here, there is no phasing contingency. I'll hit that question straight on because this is a new building, so it should be clean. We have a design contingency here. We have soft costs that include owner-procured equipment that'll be in the building. This building will have, I'll call it a bid alternate as to whether or not we actually install wash bay equipment for bush washing in the building. And we have a couple of other smaller alternates, but this is how the transportation building is stacking up at this point. And forgive us because we don't have beautiful renderings of the entire, of the interior of the transportation building to show you this evening. Questions on transportation before I move on? Okay. And now Phase 3. Phase 3 is the rest of the building, to put it simply. Pods F, J, H, and G pod. So the biggest components of those pods are the auditorium and the band orchestra, choral, tech ed, gym, and then ultimately the main lobby, which we are not doing in the first phase because we want to do it at the very end. Also, J pod's conversion from art to fitness and additional staff offices and the final conversion of the audion, which will house temporary classrooms really for the duration of the project. That is what is in Phase 3. We're looking at an advertisement date out in 2028 for Phase 3. One of the primary goals here is to get underway with Phase 2 and watch how it goes and find out if there are challenges and learn from some of those challenges and incorporate them into the following bid if we need to. Gives us flexibility. Also gives the design team flexibility and, as I mentioned before, breaks the project up for bonding capacity reasons for contractors so that they're not trying to forecast cost for you in 2025 for what they'll experience between 2028 and 2030. I'm sure that you can understand. So as these dates become more in focus, along with your meeting dates, we'll fill in this chart and keep you updated as we go. Similarly, the cost projection is listed here. For the interest of our eyes this evening, I have not included the list of soft costs, but there, there are soft costs associated with them, along with phasing, design, and construction contingency, bringing an estimated cost to just shy of $88.7 million. I think I'll give it back to Mr. Schrader, who can take you through Phase 3.
So just a few last images and to, to kind of round out what will be the final parts of the project that Mr. Lynch just described. G pod and H pod, G being the athletic and physical education, H being the technology education spaces. They're finalizing developments, so we don't have renderings of those yet. And as far as F pod is concerned, what you're seeing are the various music performance spaces. The auditorium is finishing up, we thought, because it's going to be the gem of the facility, that we would not show that to you until it's 100% complete. So hang in there and stay tuned. In this case, what's cool about this is we were able to get all of the performance spaces and the practice spaces at the same level as the stage. So from the band room, choral, and orchestral room, you can go right from there into the backside of the stage. If you have to roll instruments across, they can go directly through double doors and garage doors onto the stage. You won't have to go up or down any steps from these spaces. These spaces should look to you like many of the high schools that you've toured. They're taken directly from spaces like the Upper Marion Area High School that you saw, or the Springfield High School, or any of the others. Full locker bays around, great acoustical treatment to the spaces, new finishes, and quite frankly, they're new spaces. So this is the band room, the choral room with its risers, and now suddenly we're starting to see light fixtures in for the first time here. But they also have their instructional spaces, and you can see the instructional audiovisual right in the right-hand corner there, so that'll be in each of the spaces and outside windows to make sure that these are all naturally daylight as well. So that one is the choral room, and finally, the orchestra room as well. So it's pretty cool how these are going to connect back and forth on an even surface to the stage, and then there are ramps up and down into each of the adjacent pods from these spaces.
Thank you. And then Phase 4. Now we're getting to the end of the project. We're getting to a simpler portion of the project. And Phase 4 is envisioned to be a site contract only. And you can imagine, after we go through all of these phases and we have contractors and parents and students and buses going all over on the site and construction on a daily basis for some number of years, it's going to take a toll on the site, on the parking lots, on everything that turns up nice at the end of the project. And so we've liked, we've decided to save that work for last in that we don't want to put in new asphalt and new site work and a lot of new landscaping, although there will be some, for it only to get potentially damaged during the balance of work by construction or by whatever happens. And so the work to, for instance, restore the front parking lot, the large front parking lot, and some of the deteriorated stormwater that's under that lot is saved for Phase 4. The final coats of asphalt on our site roads, like the bus loop, the driveway out to Valley Forge, the driveways across the site would be saved for a final site contract at the very end of the project. It also includes potentially bid alternates for site work, like the tennis courts and some of the final work that's been envisioned. And one other component of this site improvement, especially for the front lot and for the stormwater pipes that need to be restored that are under the front lot, it will require a modification to the NPDS permit. And so that will be something that we do in probably the second or third year of the project to prepare for Phase 4. That was another way in order to try to expedite the NPDS permit for this year so we could get started with the work. Similarly, I've tried to provide the budget for what that work is expected to cost, and we'll fill in the dates out there. I would like to bid this project probably in 2029, if not 2020, 30, and get a great head start so that we're doing work in the summer for a lot of this work so that, again, we're not impeding the educational process, especially at that time when you'll all be sick of seeing myself and Mr. Schrader and hearing about construction at that point in time. We just, at this point, want to be done. Oh, that went fast. Not sure why I'm having trouble with this. Let's keep going here. The big finale. Just wanted to provide a slide with total project budget, so it has all of the phases on this budget slide. You've seen the four phases, and then the grand total at the right happens to match the $259 million and change that we talked to you about back in July of 2024. So that is the game plan. And that is also the last slide, so I'm sure there are other questions. Yes, sir?
What kind of inflation is built into this project?
So we have worked on a number that was approaching 4% as we've gone through and provided that type of escalation from year to year. We talked about that a lot. I think I recall when we had budget conversations and we showed you high, low, and medium costs for construction, so 4%.
Just have a quick question. So, I'm sorry, I'm getting, it's getting late, so maybe I'm getting confused. But I think, so I appreciate how each phase is broken down with its own budget. And I'm not even sure that you can answer this question, but like you said that the Phase 3, I believe, is going to be bid in 2028?
Mm-hmm.
So, and you don't have a crystal ball either, so you don't know how the economy's going to be. But like if something, you know, like, God forbid, like the recession happens like from 2008 again, like, it seems to me that the chances of something getting cut out of the project are more likely in a later phase. Is that a fair assumption, like?
Just, just processing for a minute. And I think the answer's yes, because it depends on how this next bid comes in.
Right.
And that will really dictate what we do in the next phases. Now, from that standpoint, this is one of the reasons that we've broken it into phases, because we see what happens in Phase 2. And is there something that we can alter, not remove, but alter from a value standpoint in Phase 3 to account for any overage that we see? Naturally, we don't want to take out scope, but is there something that we can do to the building? And everyone has said, let's make sure that we don't touch the auditorium, but are there other areas of the building where we can come up with ideas if we need them? Certainly, as we get to the end of the project and we see where we are with cost, yes, there's a, you know, there's a certain mentality that would say, what, what do we need to offload from this plane in order to land it? So I think it goes without saying on every project that that's how you look at the project and how you manage the project from start to finish, if that answers your question.
It does.
I guess I have a follow-up question now that Ms. Stoll asked that question because maybe it was my naivety, but I guess I was thinking that the design that we were being shown and kind of our approval of that was what we were going to get at the end. It's kind of like buying a prom dress and then five years from now, you tell me that it's not going to have sleeves or it's not going to have the train that I wanted.
I have no knowledge.
I guess, I guess I'm wondering, I understand the tweaks to a project, but I guess I'm thinking we've budgeted for the project. Like I, I feel like I'm buying the car that I think I'm buying, but like, I'm trying to speak in car language, maybe that's helpful. I'll use a different analogy. I just am wondering how much we're talking about that change could be based on what Ms. Stoll was saying. I guess the things that I see at the, the end of this project are important things when I think about band, they're, they're huge programs, the band program, the gymnasium. I mean, we don't have enough room right now for all of our phys ed classes. So those things being cut out concern me, the idea of them being cut out, when I believe that, I know that a recession could happen, but like, I also, we've budgeted for this. I'm hoping that this is what we're going to get.
I know Mrs. Stoll didn't want to open a can of worms. But another way to look at this is that the strategy was this is that the strategy was chosen to increase competition. A project this large that will take this long will eliminate many contractors because they don't want to commit to a project this long. They don't have the capacity to commit to a project for this long financially and resources and so forth. So by breaking it up, we're hoping that it is a cost containment strategy, increase competition strategy. There is risk, of course, but it also allowed us to start phase one right away instead of waiting an extra year because of some of the permitting and some of the things that we were coming upon. So we broke it up into phase one to get started real quickly. And then we're moving into these other phases for the reasons I outlined and you've heard from Jamie as well, just to, you know, telling some contractors, yeah, you're going to be on this project for six years, would limit that competition. So taking it out in chunks hopefully will result in lesser cost and then to ensure that things don't go over budget and things have to get cut in the end. So.
I think that's, that's well said. And the other thing that I know that I can provide assurance to for is that no one on the team, on Schrader Group's team, our team, the district team, would take a component that you saw this evening from the project without the board's direction. So there is no, oh, we didn't get to fit that in type of statement. It would be, you know, we're going phase by phase and we're about to receive or put out for bid phase two. We'll assess what we get from phase two. We have a series of bid alternates, as we did for phase one, that you'll make the decision on. We'll understand and assess where we are from a budget standpoint when we award contracts for phase two. And then we'll do the exact same thing as we go to phase three. Prior to phase three, I would imagine there'd be a board meeting just like this to provide you, first of all, with a look at the auditorium, but also to reassure you that the components that are in the project remain in the project, that the prom dress still has sleeves.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And again, I didn't mean to open a can of worms. I know you can't predict the future. I just, I just want to make sure that like nothing gets taken out. And if you're going to like notify the board, that, that's fine. That's good. That's-
Right? We're going to do that, right?
Right, yeah.
I think Mrs. Stoll just said she's going to run again.
No. No, I'm going to be sitting there.
You're going to sit there yelling at us.
I'm going to make public comments.
You know, I might, I might also add, if, if I will, I know, I know it's getting late, that there's that bad word that starts with a T tariffs that has been floating around. You've been watching what's been happening as well as everyone else. You know, wonderful to see what the stock market did on Friday of last week, knowing, you know, that conditions changed kind of yet again. With respect to that, to date, this is hardwood. There has not been a noticeable impact. We did not hear that from contractors on phase one. We will hear mention of it on phase two. There was certainly concern. You have heard that as well. There will certainly be opportunists in the US market if there are tariffs that affect things that come from other places where their prices will go up either because there being an opportunist or because there's a lack of supply here stateside. But you're right, I don't have a crystal ball. From all of the reports that we see, from everything that we track, from talking to contractors and subcontractors, while there's nervousness and there are vendors who are holding prices for shorter periods of time, we have not seen the likes of some jump that we did during COVID times, which was something completely different. So, you know, we've tried to protect the district from risk with this strategy so that we are not going to be binding you to a large contract for a long duration and instead taking it in bite-sized pieces.
So I have a question that may not require, it does not require an answer right now. Directing this to Mr. Nicholson and Dr. Nicholson and Dr. Bauer. But looking at the, at the budget estimates and the, and the financing of this is so sound. And I did not want to bring this up or talk about it until we had solid plan for financing, a solid plan for the building. But are we looking for opportunities for grant funding to supplement either existing things in the projects or to be able to add on to, to the building itself?
Can we have a segment on that at FNO sometime? Can you do that, Bill?
Yes, that would be great. Yes.
We're pursuing too, right now.
And maybe, you know, revisiting some sustainability things to talk about, that kind of thing.
Any Giza projects?
That would be great. So yeah, FNO would be a great place for that. So thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you so much. And again, you all don't have a crystal ball, but it's been done. This whole project, I think, has been done very thoughtfully. You've asked, you've answered all of our questions. It addresses the, I guess, the charge marching orders of the previous board to create a 21st century high school. Also, not what we haven't talked about is all the improvements in the infrastructure, the HVAC, the electrical, the energy improvements. So all of those go hand in hand, which are the foundation for this whole effort. So I feel really confident in what we're doing. I think Mr. Skrocky put us really in a good position. He was very conservative and very detailed with his financial analysis and the borrowing out 30 years. So I think that all bodes well for us. So, and even though I'm not a fan of change orders and contingency, I think your phasing approach is a very, very healthy and respectable way to do contingency for us. So thank you for that. So, anyway, it was a long presentation, but very much appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate your questions, your support, your participation, and that of the entire North Penn community on this project. We know how important it is and we're really grateful for all of the very detailed attention paid to many parts of this project. So thank you.
And at times too detailed, but, but I appreciate it. I really do. On a serious note, we're really excited about it. It was very exciting tonight to prove the motion to move forward with bid package for phase two. That was exciting. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
If we're good for other business, I just wanted to thank Mr. Linderman. This is his last meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chuck has very quietly just, you know, he said he was going to keep the ship afloat and steer in the right direction. And he's done a great job of that. So we're very appreciative and fortunate that you were coming here. He sent me a note today and said, his time is coming to a close. And I'll tell you what, this is a top-notch place. And we really appreciate that and appreciate his time. So thank you, Chuck.
Best wishes.
Yeah.
All right. All right, here we are. Motion to adjourn. Anyone? Woo! Thank you.